There is a sign-in sheet if anybody would like to address the board. And send this for anybody who didn't get one.
Sign in to address the board, one last time.
A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated August 1st, 2024, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners. Dear Commissioners, A regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, August 6th, 2024 at 5:15 PM in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Since serving yours Nancy Presrache, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of our county. And Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rokoff, Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner View.
Here.
Commissioner Krausdale.
Here.
Commissioner Van Gunhoven.
Here.
And Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
Okay, welcome everyone. Uh, we will go on to special orders of business. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, County Board Meeting 71624.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the County Board Meeting from 71624.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we got a committee of the whole on 8124. I need a motion on that.
I would request those to be tabled for now.
Oh.
Move to table.
Can I get a support?
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the change of the very last item, the closed session for the attorney opinion placed first under new business.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. We are going to move that. And the reason we're moving it is Nancy's going to have to head out. And she's the only one that can go in there and take notes. Okay, presentation of written communication. Communications received, communications forward.
Yes, yes. They're included in your packet.
Okay. Can I get a motion to put those on file?
I'll motion to put them on file.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass.
I oppose. I'm just opposing, there's stuff in there I feel is wrong, so I'm just opposing.
Okay.
It still passes, so that's fine.
Uh, number eight, reports of standing statutory and special meetings and others.
Yes, they're included in your packet.
Okay. And we go to public comment on agenda items. I don't have none here. Does anybody have anything? Anybody have any on agenda items? Okay. We'll move. I need a motion to... Okay.
I'm gonna show you your part.
Okay, let's see here. Reports, administration report.
The Finance Committee has met several times, as you see in your board packets, since our last meeting. We are still working on balancing the budget for fiscal year 2025, and a public hearing will be held September 3rd, 2024 during the regular board meeting. On July 29th, the courthouse began implementing new security protocols to safeguard the public personnel and the integrity of the governmental and judicial processes. These enhanced measures are a result of a comprehensive security assessment and are designed to provide a secure environment for all who enter the courthouse. The new security protocols include mandated metal detector screening, X-ray screening of all bags and packages, personal belongings, and we are asking individuals that are coming to the courthouse to arrive early just for the screening processes and also to just bring less of your items with you. It helps speeds up the process. That'll be all.
Okay. Can I get the motion to put that on file?
Oh, go ahead, Matt.
I was gonna say I'll make a motion to put the administrator's report on file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion pass. Uh, Finance Committee Minutes.
So there's three sets of minutes from the Finance Meeting, 718, 724, and 729. The, in the minutes from 718, there's going to be several items, if you look at your agenda, that will actually be addressed in tonight's meeting in a lot more detail. That would be the airport's RFP. You hear, the airport's budget review for '24, the RFP for the concrete floor for the sheriff's boat garage, and, um, what's the other one here?
District court.
District court, thank you. And district court. And then the meetings on 724 and 729 were just review of the fiscal year '25 budget.
Okay. Can I have a motion to put that on file? Yeah.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Personnel minutes from 722.
Yeah, we had a meeting on July 22nd, 2024. We tabled the complaint process. We will take that up again at the next meeting under new business. Civility trial, we recommend changes to the job description as presented to our board. And that carried Deputy Treasurer Equalization and Building Zone clerk job description was presented, and we supported that with the changes as presented. And we agreed to bring to the board a letter of agreement of employees discretion for new employment, a letter of agreement that was presented. We asked that to be brought to the board. I'm pretty sure that might be on the agenda tonight, that stuff, so you will hear a little more in detail of what we did. That's about it. We adjourned around 12:07 PM.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to put the personnel?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, departmental updates. Anybody, departmental updates? Seeing nothing? We will move on to general orders of business, unfinished business, there's none, new business. And at that time, we're going to move into closed session, so I need a motion to come in the regular.
I'll move that we go into closed session under the regulations of the Open Meetings Act, and I don't know what that, what is it, three points, something or whatever?
Subsection E.
Okay, subsection E.
I'll second.
Attorney, attorney opinion discussion.
I'll support.
You'll support? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will go into closed session for...
I need a motion to come back. There was no decisions made.
I'll make a motion, come back and open session.
I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills, one million seven hundred forty-one thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Commissioner expenses of one thousand thirty dollars and sixteen cents.
Do you need a motion, Chris?
I'll move that we pay the bills of one million seven hundred forty-one thousand seven hundred sixty-seven fifty-two along with one thousand and thirty dollars and sixteen cents of commissioner expenses.
Can I get a second? Can I get a roll call?
Crowe, Del.
Yes.
Benkenhoven.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Ann Melner.
Yes.
Okay, we got our bills paid. We move on to number two. Delta County Conservation District presentation, annual meeting and job opening.
It is nice to be here. I told you guys about a month or so ago I'd come back to remind you and let everybody know about our annual meeting. But first I just wanted to say I'm over at the district. We are getting things together. It's pretty exciting. I went and did an aquatic invasive species train-to-trainer workshop and it was invigorating and got me really motivated to bring some new things into the community. So, we did get the invasive species of concerns over in the Delta County forest. We worked with Steve Wery on that and Ashley to get that sprayed and then to have our watch list species out there monitored to make sure we protect against potential invaders. So that's great over at Fuller and the county forest. And then we are now hiring a forester finally. We just got approved by the state of Michigan and it's very exciting. We just put the posting out this week. So if you know anybody that wants to be a forester and serve the wonderful citizens of Delta County and also it would be for school craft too. They would cover school craft county, our neighboring county. They can find information on our website. We have all of that good stuff there on our Facebook page and they can call the office. And it's posted several places too. Michigan Works, Conservation Boards, all over the place. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention because we are moving forward and it's really exciting. And I have no doubt we'll get a highly qualified forester to help out our good folks and our land and water that's so special here. But outreach events, we do have one I want to mention. On September fourteenth, there is a wildlife food plot that we're partnering with Michigan State University Forestry Innovation Center out there in Cornell area, I guess, on J Road. And so that's on our website as well and on their Facebook page. And that'll be September fourteenth. You can learn about food plots, but also we're going to put some pollinator species out there. And I think rolling smoke barbecue is supplying all the food. So it's going to be pretty cool. You do have to RSVP for that, so you can call the district and we can help you with that because that's limited. Participation, participation, I'm sorry. And then our annual meeting. So our fresh growth on the fresh coast, we're calling it. We've been through a lot. It's our celebration of the district and we've mainly been trying to figure out what we're doing since I've gotten there. So we're at a good place. I feel we want to just let the community come in and offer this as a free event. It's just to have, you know, conservation or conversation in conservation and community. So we'll have food from our local producers. It's been really fun trying to discover who's producing what and our local growers and they're amazing. So we'll have some of them there that'll be supplying food and tastes and some of the crafts that they're so skilled in doing. We have Bill Rennie that will be there providing music for two hours. And Cushion Prock Farms will be there putting on a pollinator garden presentation. And then we'll have our board of elections for our remaining board seat there. And we have two qualified candidates.
I do need a motion to come back. There was no decisions made.
I'll make a motion, come back in the open session.
Support.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Okay. Uh, payment of bills.
I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills, one million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Commissioner expenses of one thousand, thirty dollars and sixteen cents.
I'll move.
Do you need a motion, Chris?
Motion.
I'll move that we, uh, pay the bills of one million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven, fifty-two along with one thousand and thirty dollars and sixteen cents of commissioner expenses.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call?
Mr. View.
Yes.
Crowsdale.
Yes.
Van Genhoven.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Ann Melner.
Yes.
Okay, we got our bills paid, we move on to number two. Delta County, uh, Conservation District Presentation Annual Meeting and Job Opening.
Um, hello commissioners. Ashley and Nikki. Um, it is nice to be here, I told you guys about a month or so ago, I'd come back to remind you and, and let everybody know about our annual meeting. But first, I just wanted to say, I'm over at the district, we are, um, getting things together, it's, it's pretty exciting. Um, I went and did an aquatic invasive species train, the trainer workshop, and it was, it was invigorating and got me really motivated to bring some new things into the community. So, um, we did get, uh, the invasive, um, species of concerns over in, um, the Delta County Forest. We worked with Steve Wery on that and Ashley to get that, um, sprayed and then to have our watch list, uh, species out there monitored to make sure we protect against potential invaders. So that's great, over at Fuller and the county forest. Um, and then we are now hiring a forester finally, it's, we just got approved by the state of Michigan, and it's very exciting. We just put the posting out this week, so if you know anybody that, um, wants to be a forester and serve the wonderful citizens of Delta County. And also, it would be for school craft too, they would cover school craft county, our, our neighboring county. Um, we can find, yeah, they can find information on our website, uh, we have all of that good stuff there on our Facebook page, or they can call the office. Um, and it's posted several places too, uh, Michigan Works, um, Conservation Boards, all, all over the place. But, um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention because we are moving forward and it's really exciting. And I have no doubt we'll get a highly qualified, um, forester to, to help out our good folks and our, um, and our land and, and water that's so special here. But, um, outreach events, we do have one I want to mention, on September fourteenth, there is a wildlife food plot that's gonna, that we're partnering with Michigan State University Forestry Innovation Center, um, out there in Cornell area, I guess, on J Road. And so that's on our website as well, um, and on their, uh, Facebook page, and that'll be September fourteenth. Uh, you can learn about food plots, but also, we're gonna, um, put some pollinator species out there. And, um, I think rolling smoke barbecue is, is supplying all the food, so it's gonna be pretty cool. Uh, you do have to RSVP for that, so you can call the district and we can help you with that, um, 'cause that's limited. Participat- participation, participation, I'm sorry. Um, and then our annual meeting, so our fresh growth on the fresh coast, we're calling it, uh, we've been through a lot, it's our celebration of the district. And we've mainly been trying to, um, figure out what we're doing, um, since I've gotten there. So, we're at a good place, I feel, um, we want to just let the community come in and offer this as a free event. It's just to have, you know, conservation or, uh, con- conversation in conservation and community. Uh, so we'll have food from our local producers, um, it's been really fun trying to, uh, discover who's producing what and our local growers and, and they're, they're amazing. So, we'll have some of them there, that'll be supplying, um, food and tastes and some of the crafts that they're, um, they're, they're so skilled in doing. Uh, we have Bill Rennie that will be there providing music for two hours. And, um, Cushion Proct Farms will be there putting on a pollinator garden presentation. And then we'll have our board of elections for our remaining board seat there. And we have two qualified candidates and they'll be there, so you can come out and get to know them. Um, but basically, door prizes, raffles, uh, everything, it's gonna be so fun. So, I just wanted to make sure, I told you guys that, it's on August twenty-first, from three PM to seven PM Eastern Time, um, out at Northern Sun Winery and Vineyards in Bark River. It's free, you can bring your dogs, as long as they are unleashed and they're, they're well behaved, you can bring your kids, as long as they're leashed and well behaved. And we're gonna have a lot of fun and just have a night to like unwind, drink some wine or lemonade, whatever, and just have fun and, and get to know each other and support each other and just be neighbors, you know? No drama, we've been through a lot of that, so. I have, uh, this is your official formal invitation, so please share this with your districts and, um, it's really hard to get your emails for some reason. So I will give you guys each one of these and then I'll, I'll leave some over there, um, the community, it's free, please come out. And, uh, there's, there's a lot of people, there's some people coming from Marquette, School Craft, Alger, we have, um, some people running for elections in the fall that are coming that you can talk to. Um, so, we're pretty excited about it and that's all I had, so.
Anybody got any questions for her?
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Thank you.
Do you have a question for me?
Absolutely.
He's always got questions.
First off, uh, it's a two-part question, how long have we, has the district been without a forester? And then, now that we're gonna get one, is that utilized by all the residents of Delta County or other counties? And is there a charge for it or, and it's just forest management is what this person's gonna do or?
Yeah, so our forester is gonna be a FAT forester, which is, FAT is, um, Forestry Assistance Program. So they'll go out and they will work with you, they're, they're like a bridge. So they'll bridge you with what you need, um, to, you know, for private landowners that might, uh, wanna take advantage of some of the programs that are out there. So they can get funding for, you know, planting certain things or, um, you know, whatever they want to do with their land. Our forester will come out and help them, you know, provide resources or, or find those resources for them. So there's no charge.
Okay.
And then with the community, um, they will be doing like outreach and getting out there, we want to do like coastal restoration or, um, invasive species or wild edibles. You know, we'll have a bunch of stuff that we want to bring to the community and, uh, really engage everybody in the community and their interests and try to, you know, it'll take a while. But we want to open it up so that we are really appealing to everyone and every interest in the county. So, um, they will also serve School Craft County. We have been without a forester since, I think, the spring, but, um, our staff have been kind of filling in the blanks. So if someone's interested in one of the NRCS programs, the Qualified Forest, let's say, um, that brings, you know, gives them funding for planting certain things, diversity. Um, we've been stepping in and, and taking on the brunt of the work that we are, um, experienced enough to do. You know, we, we, we can only go so much, but, um, but we've held it together, but we are ready to bring a forester in so that we can do other things.
Is, is there any, any part of your department with a forester that does public entities, it's just private, correct?
But they don't, yeah, they don't compete with the public, um, but they do promote the public, uh, if there's public foresters, um.
I mean, the public land that the county owns, I, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so we did help, you know, before, out at the county forest, we had our forester out there, um, I wasn't on board then, but the, the forester was out there helping with management or, um, just, just.
There's, there's potential there someday.
There's lots of potential, we're just getting started.
Well, thank you.
Trust me, it's gonna be amazing, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we go to number three, airport, RFP, Compact Utility Trailer Award.
Hi, good evening, members of board, I am gonna do my best to be brief, 'cause I know we got a full agenda and we have an election going on. So, um, I'm just gonna provide all the bottom line stuff up front, and please, if you have any questions, do feel free to ask. But with this, uh, RFP for the compact utility tractor, we received three bids, all of which were from out of state. And I also added a fourth option, which was a procurement option that I got through my deal, which is a, uh, state-sponsored program that Commissioner Jensen brought to my attention. I can't remember if it was an airport board meeting or here. But, um, the John Deere tractor that is offered through that state extended purchasing program is the best of the four available options for us. Unfortunately, it's also the most expensive, but it's still within that five percent margin. Uh, the three reasons why it's probably the best option for us are, have to do the fact that the proximity to the dealer, yeah, the dealership, it's a local dealership, it will cut down on traveling cost. If we have to have anyone come out to work on the tractor, if we have to ship the tractor over to them. Um, they also offer extended, uh, warranty programs and servicing programs, which will benefit the airport and, you know, potentially extend the life of the tractor as well. And at the end of the day, it's a local business, so if we're purchasing something from a Delta County business, it is a reinvestment within our own community.
Quickly, the difference between the one from your lowest and the one from my deal was difference like twenty-three hundred somewhere there?
The difference between the lowest and the highest, the lowest, uh, bid came in at forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, that was from Mount Vernon, Illinois, and that was for a Bobcat tractor. The highest bid is the my deal one I'm referring to, the John Deere tractor from Northgate, which is sixty-four thousand, twenty-six dollars. The Bobcat came in low because it, it did not meet the criteria of the bid, it has a substandard mowing deck, it's smaller than the diameter that we're requesting. And it also does not have the, the configured radio that we're requesting as well. So, it kind of is more or less disqualified, but I included it because they did place the bid and they did follow the procedure. Uh, the other two comparable bids were, uh, both the same model Kubota tractor, one is from Coleman, Wisconsin, out of Beaver, uh, Beaver Machine out of Coleman, Wisconsin. Another one is Chavis Brothers out of Boca Raton, Florida. Beaver Machine was the most competitive of the three bids, and the Kubota tractor is a fine, fine vehicle. Um, but again, if we need any service or maintenance beyond what's covered in the warranty, it would come at expense to the airport for that and for those field service calls.
No. I need a motion on this?
I'll make the motion that the, for the air- airports RFP, um, to use the local provider for the difference in center.
Okay, can I get a support?
Support.
Can we get, oh, it's.
And just for clarification, this is for the local provider through the my deal?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, support.
Okay, discussion.
I guess when I look at the difference of twenty-three hundred and what it costs, and it's not if you ship, I went through that shipping from that location to here, um, you'll eat that twenty-three hundred up in less than a year or two.
Plus, that must be within our, our policies that we can stay local five percent or something, so.
Correct.
And I would support staying local as much as possible.
And it would be easier for repair purposes, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We should do a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
View.
Yes.
Crowsdale.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Van Genhoven.
Yes.
Ann Melner.
Yes. Okay, motion pass. Now, it moves on to number four, airport inspection results.
Yes, and I attached a letter of our closeout letter, the periodic certification inspection closeout, that the FAA provided us on July fifth of this year. Uh, that was followed up by an online outbrief on July eighteenth, where I had a teams meeting online with the, uh, the inspector. And there's nothing in this letter that's beyond what we've already discussed informally through department head updates, I'm simply up here to make sure this is entered into the record as is required, because the board requires that I officially provide an update of the inspection. Passed with flying colors, everything went really well.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, do we need a motion to put this on file?
Yes.
So moved.
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Okay, number five, airport budget review fiscal year twenty-four.
Um, this is something that Airport Manager Vance Adler, Assistant Airport Manager and myself, uh, worked on. Typically, housekeeping is done, uh, in September, um, however, with the many changes in the airport, we decided to do a review early. Um, we are just asking to move some budgets around.
You are asking to move some budgets around?
Right, I can only do so much, so I need the board approval.
Well, um, it's a total of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, or two hundred and seventy-seven, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. And this money would be getting moved from a few different locations, including the airport's fund balance. The bulk of this money, ninety-six percent of it, would be put towards our bulk fuel sub- purchase, our Jet A purchase, our jet fuel. So what that means is at the beginning of the year, when these original budget projections were done, they fell short of what we actually sold, which is actually encouraging and good news. We're selling more fuel and we're making more money than what we originally expected. So this money that we'd be moving out of the fund balance in various locations is going to be used to purchase fuel, which in turn is gonna be sold for profit. So we're gonna make a profit of every dollar that we're moving, and then it'll be returned to the fund balance plus, plus the profit. Uh, the remaining, uh, amount of money that's left over, the four percent of it or so, which totals about twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars, is for shortfalls and other categories, which include building maintenance, vehicle maintenance, office supplies, uh, and marketing. Now, that amounts, eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, the, the majority of it, three quarters of it, will be reimbursed before the end of the calendar year from SkyWest Airlines, because they do reimburse us for our advertising, marketing expenses provided we meet their criteria. Which leaves a grand total of four thousand, thirty dollars that we incurred, these additional expenses, we, we had an expensive year at the airport. Uh, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that been put off, that had to be done for a lot of vehicles and equipment, we had some equipment failures in the main terminal, so.
Yeah.
We just needed to pay for those things.
Okay. Thank you.
So the fuel, um, that's for the Jet A, that's not, we don't need any hundred low lead?
Correct.
It's just Jet A that we're doing, okay.
I need a motion to move the budget numbers around?
We'll move.
I need a support?
I'll support.
Any more discussion?
Yes, Ashley, this is your recommendation to go ahead and do this?
Yes, it came through the finance board.
Thank you.
The, the only question I had, you got two hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred added to the budget for jet fuel. And then deduct from the budget for resale of one of the fuels was forty thousand, and then you added, uh, another fifteen thousand and seventeen thousand, jet fuel fifteen, uh, one hundred, is that low lead fuel for seventeen?
Yes.
And you're only projecting to recoup forty thousand total of all that?
It's forty thousand net revenue.
Okay, so that, that, okay. So that figure is our profit then, on that side, after deducting the wholesale price, yes, okay. Just clarity.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to number six, RFP, Concrete Floor for Sheriff's Boat Garage.
So, um, the sheriff's department is requesting approval for this RFP, it's on the concrete flooring in the boat garage. The sheriff has also been awarded ten thousand dollars for the Hannibal grant and the remaining portion, um, you'll see later down the agenda. He is requesting to obligate some of his America Rescue Plan funds for coverage of the remaining portion of the garage.
Okay. I do need a motion?
I'll move that we, um, pose, um, the concrete floor for the boat garage, is this a request for proposal or to do a request for proposal to get pricing on having that floor installed?
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number seven, Appointment to Parks and Recreation Commission, District Five.
So there is one current applicant that's there. And that applicant would be Nate Brockman. And I had the opportunity to reach out to references, um, as well as talking to him and actually, I mean, a separate tour of the county forest. He is our, our sole individual that, that is, um, that did apply for the position. And like I said, based off of his references, my conversations with those references, as well as himself, um, I'd like to move for his nomination at this time for District Five, for the Park and Recreation Board.
I'll move that we, um, appoint Nate Brockman to the Delta County Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
It's not an advisory board, it's a commission. Park and Recreation Commission.
Commission, then, I do, I just seen advisory on, uh, the application. I'll correct that to commission.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Okay. Number eight, Rules of Procedure, Public Comment. Eve?
This was requested by Commissioner Van Genhoven to add to the agenda. Yes, so two meetings ago, I, uh, called point of order on, uh, a person, a citizen, while making public comment as the comment was, uh, not pertaining to our six rules for public comment. And so, um, I was, uh, uh, talked to by Commissioner Jensen and Commissioner View saying that they, the citizen, to be able to speak in her entirety, these rules. 'Cause if we're not going to abide by them, then they shouldn't be here, so I just opened it up for discussion.
Anybody, anything on that?
Yeah, there's actually, I guess I look at two parts, when we look at what we currently have for rules, as far as those items that pertain directly to business overall, I look at those on our agenda items. So it's her directly related to the business that we are conducting, um, and conducting that day. Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, there we go, better? Okay, thank you. Um, one of the things that I looked at is what we have for our rules, and based off of what we have for agenda items, those very specifically fit where that is. It, it literally is what, within the scope of those rules and what we do and what our business is. I look at the other part of open public comment, that's general public comment. And, and I understand where some will look at that says, well, it has to be just within the scope of what the board can do. And, and I understand that, but on the same token, if I look at it as it's literally general public comment. Now, I know there's, there's, you know, an opinion from the Attorney General from nineteen seventy-eight, um, and I think everybody should have gotten a copy of that as well, as well as two other, um, cases. Um, so I mean, there, there is legal standing if we decide we want to put very specific rules in, even in general comment. I personally don't believe in being the speech police. And, you know, if it's one of those that's within the scope that they want to bring up, then I just assume let the individual speak.
So then you, so then you're, just for clarification, so, um, on agenda where it says rules for public comment, you would strike number four?
No, I would not, that, because that actually applies directly to agenda items.
No, it does not, it says rules for public comment, it does not say rules for public comment on agenda items.
Then, if, if we're gonna look at, I wouldn't look at, strike, you know, thing, I would look at it then as, um, for agenda items then.
Okay, so you would change.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it.
So you would, so you would change rules for public comment would be rules for public comment on agenda items?
Or you can do it as rules for, um, public comment for general public comment and agenda items, you can put them together, you don't have to list two separate ones.
Okay, but you just got done saying that the comments of the speaker must relate to the business that is within the jurisdiction of the board, but then you just said you don't want to be the comment police.
You just took, you just took the part that was the heading of the rules. If you're looking at that, where the heading is for the rules for public comment. If you're looking at that, where the heading is for the rules for public comment, that would be the part you would have, rules for public comment and agenda items. That's in your heading. You can still list under that whether it's, it's one to six?
I'm not understanding you, I'm sorry.
Okay. I don't know how, um, let me see here, I can put it.
So you would just leave this the way it is?
I would.
And then if the speaker, the comments of the speaker must relate to business that is within the jurisdiction of the board, if they got up there during, under public comment, under general public comment, and they said something that was not within the jurisdiction of the board, we're to let them speak anyways?
I would.
Yes.
Then why would we have these rules to begin with?
Because these rules actually, in my view, the way those look, they apply directly to those items over agenda comments. That's why also, if you read through the other cases that were provided, that's why they actually have to, an individual has to sign in, they also have to say, state who they are.
Okay.
I, I, that's, that's my opinion. I'm not, I'm not up there to shut anybody down from speaking, I'm not throwing people out of meetings just because I don't like what they have to say.
We don't throw anybody out of meetings.
Well-
We have rules for public comment that we're not going to follow, basically.
Well, can I-
No.
Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I don't know how we got to this point, except that we followed lots of the rules loosely, Roberts Rules of Order, public comment rules. We endured a lot of comments that didn't sound good, and were like, close to personal attacks. All of us have, you know, over the, the past year or so. And I believe if they're not threatening, you know, we're going to blow you up, or we're going to do this, and they're not really disruptive, I have no issue. Matter of fact, I welcome people to help me become a better commissioner by critiquing what I've done, or what I've said, or what other people have said. It's not that we have to march to what they're saying, but I think it's something we can ponder and look at, the importance of how they feel. Because sometimes emotions get involved, and I would not want to shut someone down because of how emotional they were on a given issue at one time or another, unless it falls under one of them criterias that becomes dangerous for all of us and, and the members in the audience.
I do, I do see what you say. And I, I think the difference that I have in my mind, and maybe it's incorrect, is that if a constituent or a concerned citizen gets up to the podium and has something negative to say about us-
Oh, boy, they-
It's within the, but that's within the county, right? Because we are employees of the county. If citizen A from the audience gets up and starts attacking citizen B from the audience, and neither of them are county employees, neither of them are entities of the county, we're just supposed, and it has nothing to do with the purview of the board, and we're just supposed to give them their three minutes and let them go.
Actually, I would look at it at that point, they're adults, and if they're going to go and make that, and it's not in, like, one of those where it's an elected position, then that becomes a separate legal matter.
But we're just supposed to let them?
They're adults, they're, they're responsible for their actions. I'm not the speech police. If they do something that was, uh, be slanderous, or, or defamation of character to somebody else, that's not one of those that's elected, that opens that individual up to a lawsuit. I mean, that's, is that the forum for it? Probably not, but it, who's, who's to say that it's, it's our job to stop somebody else from saying it? They could do it out in a parking lot, and, and go off on somebody. Difference is, now it's, I mean, it's recorded, it's a matter of public record.
Yep. Mr. Chair, to piggyback on Commissioner Jensen's, uh, freedom of speech is probably the most important thing we have in our United States. And when somebody crosses the line and becomes slanderous, that is not, that can be remedied with a lawsuit, because then it becomes, if you look it up, that is the main thing that, uh, you, you don't have complete freedom to say things that can be slanderous. And, I mean, because I was reading about it over the last couple of weeks on it, and I just felt that I'm willing to take what anyone wants to tell me on, in the public. Matter of fact, you know, I, I've always, I don't welcome it, but I embrace it to the point that it makes me better. That, that's it.
Any more discussion?
I concur with-
There's, that could be, it was mainly a discussion item, so. Any more discussion on it?
I think the new board in January can, can hone in on changing this if they so desire with rules of procedure, correct? Kelly? I mean, Ms. Van Gedenhoven?
I have no, I, I have to be completely honest. I'm going to have to go back and watch this on YouTube, because I have no idea what's going on right now. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, because I don't understand how we have rules for public comment that we're not going to follow, but that they have to follow.
That who has to follow?
The public. Because we're just seeing, I, I'm not understanding this at all. So I'm just not going to talk about it anymore, and you and I can have a discussion afterwards.
Sure.
Okay. I don't know, I think I'm meeting one that's confused, and that's okay.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing it up, anyway.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
We'll move on to number nine, courthouse LOA, employee- employer. All discussion on employee.
This letter of agreement expired in December of twenty-three, and the union, along with administration, are requesting to continue the LOA until the expiration date of the next contract, of this contract that we're currently in.
Is it, this is exactly the same as the previous?
Yes.
I'll move that we signed a letter of agreement between the board and the employees at Delta County Courthouse, uh, the letter of agreement, uh, until the next contract period of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion, pass. Okay, number ten, Central Dispatch Advisory Bylaws.
So the advisory bylaws put together, I'm sorry, the advisory put together these bylaws, and we're just requesting approval from the board commissioners.
Can I get a motion on the bylaws? Central Dispatch.
I'll make a motion to accept the bylaws from Delta County Central Dispatch as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
There's no changes to this, correct? I mean, it's basically the same-
Well, these are the first.
Oh, this is the first?
Right, because if you, prior to this, they were the authority.
The authority, their advisory, no?
Yep.
So it's an advisory board, um, okay. Eight pages, so.
It, it is thorough.
Yes.
Went through several review processes with the board, with the advisory.
Okay, I'm satisfied with it. I, I went through it, and I, I thought there was something prior to, so.
I have a motion, I got a second, we had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion, pass. Okay, we move on to number eleven. And it's IT Committee.
This was recommended by the committee of the whole to form an IT committee consisting of two commissioners. Of course, the IT department.
Move to create the IT committee?
Support.
Second.
No. I already moved it.
Okay, sorry. Third!
Any discussion on the IT Committee?
No, that was a really good discussion during the committee of the whole, over the whole process.
Yes.
For those that weren't here, it was, um, it was an amazing meeting, especially with interactive interaction with the public. There was a lot of good points that were raised throughout it. So, um, yeah, I definitely see it going forward. That, that worked really well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion, pass.
Commissioner, under the same agenda item, could we have the appointees from the commissioners?
Ooh. Who's going to be on the IT?
Let's see. Who would like to be on it?
I would.
Yeah, I mean, I would. I'd do it. But can we, can, it's not on the agenda, so can we actually appoint anybody without it being on the agenda?
I think the chair has the authority.
The chair has the authority to, and we can have a discussion.
Yeah.
I would like to, I, I would actually like to see Myra on this committee, because she's not on personnel or finance. What do you think, Myra? It would be, the finance committee would be Brandon.
IT.
I will accept.
Yes.
Okay.
So Myra, and who else?
I got too much already.
I do, but I'll probably have to rock paper scissors, Steve.
No, if, if I-
What do you think, Steve? What do you think?
I like IT, I just know that. I mean, I've done a lot of, a lot of, a lot of learning, and I'm sure Matt, you have too, so.
Myra and Steve will be the two commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, number twelve, District Court, part-time, full-time Judge Parks.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Started the Drug and Sobriety Court about eight years ago. Advised by Lansing that we should set our capacity at fifteen. Our, our court services high-risk, high-need offenders. And we learned very quickly that that was really good advice, because high-risk, high-need offenders, um, rang in and monitored and held accountable. And that took a lot of effort, and, and we got to the point where we felt that we needed additional, um, so we applied for a grant and received, not the full grant, but enough money to hire Katie Tryon as a part timer.
Excuse me, Honored, can you tilt the mic up a little bit? The audience was having a hard time hearing. Thank you.
Is that better? I don't know.
No?
No.
You're too tall.
I'll talk louder.
Okay.
Kneel down. Just kidding.
So, so we hired Katie Tryon, who's been working twenty-eight hours a week, and she's a, a very good employee and essential to the operation of the Drug and Sobriety Court. But since we began, um, there's been a methamphetamine explosion here in Delta County. By example, the ten years that I was a prosecutor, there was three methamphetamine cases. In the ten years I've been doing this job, we probably see three to five a week. So there's an explosion of this substance, and a lot more people that are addicted, it's highly addictive substance. And so what we've been wanting to do for the last couple of years is expand the capacity of the Drug and Sobriety Court from fifteen to twenty. And we have applied and requested grants from both North Care and Supreme Court Administrator's Office to allow us to hire a full-time employee, and we're still working on that. But what we want to do is have Katie go into this position as a full-timer, and so what I'm about to reveal to you, um, I don't, I don't think, this doesn't implicate any county money, I'm just trying to give you a heads-up where we're going, and this will follow up with my request to you. So right now, we have about twenty-three thousand dollars in that grant money, and my intention is to, as soon as possible, make Katie Tryon a, a full-time employee from now until October one. The reason is, we want to burn, we want to use that money, so we're in a better position to ask for grant money that is at least that, and may be more than that. So what I'm planning to do is have her become a full-time employee as soon as possible to October one. After October one is the reason why I'm here, though, because with the grant funding, it's reimbursement grants, and we have calculated that, that based on the fifty-five thousand dollars we received in grants, she's indicated that she would only want dental and, and eye insurance, and so according to our calculations, with the fifty-five that we had this year, we could pay her as a full-time employee right within those grant proceeds. It'd be about fifty-four, according to our calculations. And so what I would like to do is be able to, uh, have the board authorize us to have her go into a full-time position. And I want to be clear that this isn't a way of sticking the county to pay for that liability if it's not funded by grant proceeds. She understands that if those grant proceeds do not cover a full-time employee for twelve months, then she's just going to have to go back to full-time employment. If, for example, we get, we get money and the county's reimbursed, we're confident we'll be able to, we'll be able to reimburse the county for the money it extended to her after October one, but if that money dries up, that's the six-month mark, then she'll have to go back to part-time employment. I do want to remind the board that the Drug and Sobriety Courts have been studied throughout the country, and they are really the most effective tool in the arsenal of, of the judiciary. The studies show that for every public dollar it saves, for every dollar expended on the drug court, it saves three public dollars. And you can think about that, because for, for instance, of the thirty-five graduates that we've had, we, we look at them at the five-year mark, and we're about, about twenty percent of them have re-offended for drug or alcohol offenses, the eighty percent have not. And that speaks volumes, because with the high-risk, high-need population that we service, many of the drug offenders went from IV drugs use to sobriety, and the alcohol offenders have had long history of substance abuse. And so what we're doing is, we're keeping these people out of jail, we're contributing to not only their well-being, but the well-being of their family and the community, and the savings is immense. And it does, the studies clearly show that, that what we're doing is far more effective than traditional probation, or just putting people in jail and saying, deal with it. And so I understand, we're coming up on a fiscal year, I understand that there may be other, you know, other entities within the courthouse that may be looking for employee, but at least what I can tell you about this one, this is, this is a money saver, this is an investment in our community and our people, and it does pay returns when you figure that it costs over a hundred dollars a day to house somebody at the jail. So we're keeping these people out of jail and getting them back to work. And so, um, the first part of it, I feel that, that we have the, since it's all grant-funded between now and October one, I think that's within my area, and, and that's what I want to do. But beyond that, I would like to have the support of the board to, to have that be a full-time position, that it's grant-funded, and with the understanding that if, if there's a shortfall in the grant, we're not going to be looking at the county to say, okay, well, you got to keep her on a, a county expense. That's not what we're intending to do. The legislature, the, the Supreme Court has been very much behind the establishment and growth of Drug and Sobriety Courts, and so we're cautiously optimistic with our track record that we're going to get the funding that we need. And we'd like your blessing to make that happen after the first of the year. Is there any, is any questions? And for those of you who may not have come to a graduation, we do have one who'll be invited in September, and I strongly encourage you to come. It's really worthwhile, and, and something we take a lot of pride in.
Yeah, I've been to a couple of them already.
I was going to say, in that same conversation, when the sheriff was in the room that day, one of the medications for those individuals that have various levels of addiction, the, the jail has to provide for those individuals. It's not like, you know, Days Pass, where, you know, they put them in a tank to dry out and figure out whatever your demons are on your own. It's not like that anymore. One of those medications, I think you said- One of those medications, I think you said, the regular brand name was like 4,000, but they can get the generic for two. That's for one application for that inmate. So I, I mean, I can see the savings upfront.
Yeah, it's definitely there, and it's, you know, if anybody questioned any of this, you can go online, and you could read all about it because the courts have been studied by all kinds of groups, these, these courts, these specialty courts, and, and they work. It's the best thing we have right now, so.
Okay, with that, can I get a motion?
I'll move that we expand the sobriety court person, the part-time person, to full-time. And as long as the grant funding is available.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, only because Katie is family. Katie Tryon is family, so I'm abstaining. But I do support it, but I'm abstaining.
Uh, let's see here. Motion passed. Okay.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Number three, Deputy Treasurer, Equalization and Building and Zoning Clerk's Job Description.
This is just a job description update. It's been recommended by the Personnel Committee, has been reviewed by the County Treasurer, Equalization, Building and Zoning, and myself.
I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number 14, American Rescue Plan Act Review, Maintenance Sheriff and IT.
I had a conversation with a couple of those departments you just mentioned regarding December 31st of '24 is the deadline for all American Rescue Plan Act funds to be obligated, and ours are all currently obligated right now. But they approached me on changing or not changing, adding more projects to their list of obligations. The Sheriff's Department would like to include the boat garage that we spoke of earlier. Maintenance Department would like to change a couple of the LED streetlights here at the Service Center parking lot. They would like to convert the jail controls to train. Currently, they're done by, I forgot the company.
Johnson.
Johnson.
Johnson, okay.
Train's gonna be better.
And they would like to finish odds and ends over at the multi-use garage. And then IT has been using funds for all of our security updates, and they would just like to include security updates to be a part of theirs. So we just need approval from the commissioners.
Both to approve.
Can I get support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Good projects.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number 15, Out of County Travel for MAC.
So September 24th through the 26th is the Michigan County's annual conference. We're requesting approval for the commissioners to travel out of county, and also a reminder that if you want to register for the conference, please contact Tracy. We only have one registered.
Is it you, John?
I think it's Mr. Johnson.
Oh, it's bad, oh. Move to approve.
Support?
I'll support it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, number 16, Opioid Task Force Budget Request.
During July's Task Force meeting, the Task Force recommended to allow 50% of opioid sediments to be used for administrative costs, so the Task Force is seeking your support and approval for such allocation.
You said 15?
15%.
Okay, 15, okay. I just wanted to make sure it was 15 and not 15.
Oh, sorry, 15, one by.
Yeah, okay.
I'll move that we approve the 15% allocated for administrative costs.
I'll support.
And I would like to make the comment that it's a small amount, but it can be huge over 18 years, and if we don't need it for administrative costs, we will not use it for that. We're, we're out to protect and save lives on our decisions on the opioid board, so it's not going to be abused. It's just we need to start somewhere in getting some advertising and different things out into the community for the money that we're receiving.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed.
We don't need a roll call on that, do we, because we're spending, we're approving spending money or no?
I don't think we do. We already have the money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Yeah, we're just moving it.
Well, and, and the other thing about this, even though we voted on it, everything that is being spent outside of this will come back to the board.
To the board, yeah.
It'll still be a board decision from moving forward on any spending.
We're okay?
So it's $10,000, and I believe it would be, what did we calculate at the meeting you recall?
I don't remember. Do you want to do it just, you want to do it just in case?
No, no, no.
Let's do it just in case.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Because I want to say it was over.
I want to say it was over 10.
Do a roll call.
Yeah.
Do a roll call and be safe.
You?
Yes.
Crazdale?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Benckenhoven?
Yes.
And Melner?
Yes. Okay, we come down to general public comment.
Already?
Yes, does anybody have? Matt?
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Mascart. I'm the CEO of Pathways Community Mental Health. Pathways is a governmental authority created by Elger, Delta, Lewis, and Marquette Counties in January of 2018, oh, excuse me, 1998, wrong issue. I'll get that little gaffer out of the way, make it a little easier. So yearly Pathway serves individuals with developmental, intellectual and developmental disabilities, children with severe emotional disturbances, and adults with severe mental illnesses. In a year, we serve right around 3,000 individuals in, in the four counties, with right around 200 individuals when we're fully staffed, 85 of them right here in Delta County. I'm coming to you today because I, back in June, I brought, Commissioner Melner brought forth the request from Pathways to the County Commission to pass a resolution in opposition of conflict-free access and planning. This is a proposal put forth for conflict avoidance by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid and the feds, and implemented by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. This was a, a, a proposal that would, would structurally tear apart the community mental health system as it's, as it sits today. Right now, we, we do Pathways and the other 46 community mental healths do access into services, service planning, and then service delivery. Those could not be part of it. You'd have to have service and delivery on one half, and then access and planning another, another half. This, as I said, would structurally change where we're, where we're at within the community mental health system. It would be very detrimental for those we serve. We've, the, the, just last week, it came, it became known to, to me that the Department of Health and Human Services has backed up their implementation date, which was planned for October 1st, to undetermined date. My peers and I in, in the, across the state, hope that we never see that date. So I wanted to extend a thank you to you, the County Commission, and specifically Commissioner Melner, for his role as, as, on the Pathways Board as well, for helping to bring this forth and helping to maintain the best possible services for, for those in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any more public comment?
Perfect warning.
Good evening. Sandro Sceba, Maple Ridge Township. I want to congratulate all of us, the candidates, for getting to this night. Good job. And I also want to say that if I have the honor to sit at the table and work as a commissioner with you and work on some of the issues that are very important to the citizens, that is going to be amazing. I pledge to give as much energy to that position as I did to campaigning. If I don't, that's okay, because it's more about my message than just the position, because I have been down at the bottom. I've been talking to the residents, as it's been said, to be at the bottoms, to be out there with the residents, the lower people. I've been out there with them, hearing their concerns, speaking to them, working with them, not just at the top. And I will be there for them after today, whether I get to sit at the table or whether I'm with them sitting in the audience. I, I truly appreciate this opportunity. I've appreciated becoming so not unknown, because I am now very well-known. And with a general thought here, a quote that has been said many times is, "Stop telling lies about me, and I won't start telling the truth about you."
Any more public comment?
Good evening. Barney Hakla, Escanaba. So I'd just like to respond to some of the things when we're talking about freedom of speech and public comment. I think it's important, and I think you've heard me speaking about civility many times during the last year and whatever timeframe, and that it is important to be civil. But it's also important that people have their rights maintained, and one of the important rights, as you've set up here, is freedom of speech. So I wouldn't want to see anyone curtailing that in any way, shape, or form. You have rules, and they should be followed, but, excuse me, I think freedom of speech is very important. Also, I'm thinking about your budget. 1.7 million bills paid. It's a lot of money. I hope you're looking at it very carefully and cutting back where you can. Fiscal responsibility is very important for accounting for everyone. And then I would like to also remind us that we are living in a constitutional republic, even though everybody says democracy. We actually are living in a constitutional republic, and the laws, common laws are in our constitution, and that's what we should be following. We've got a lot of statutory law that's coming at us, and it confuses people, but remember, any statutory laws that are made that are repugnant to the Constitution can stand. So, there we go. Once again, constitutional republic, keep all of our rights, and keep doing your good job. Thank you. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Any more public comment? Okay, we will go to commissioners' comments. Commissioner Crazdale.
Yes. Being an important night tonight, I will keep mine short and just thank everybody for in attendance and on Zoom. It was brought to my attention, something that I thought was very good, and I'm not sure if everybody had heard about it or not, but the Highland Golf Course. Area veterans can golf there for free on Mondays. So I thought I would just mention that real quick so that if they don't know that, that they were aware of it. But I thought that was very admirable of the golf course, of the Highland Golf Course, doing something for the veterans, which I'm 100% behind the veterans. And if they can get out and, and golf one day for free, excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner View.
Couple of things. We're still working on the complaint process. We'll be moving forward that at the next Personnel Committee meeting, I hope. Escanaba Township, we attended the Board of, the Zoning Board yesterday, and they're going to have a CREO, which is a compatible renewable energy ordinance for public discussion, coming up within the next month or so. I have a copy of it here if anyone's interested in looking at it. Let's see. I got a Michigan Workforce Meeting tomorrow. We'll be discussing the economical opportunity and labor stuff coming to Bay College. There's going to be a seminar there. I'll get more information there that I can pass on to the public. I want to thank Heather from the Conservation District's Department for her report. I still support some form of Zoom or phone-in for.
Public comment.
Public comment, real time. I, I don't, I think we can work something out. I, I'm just letting people know I have not given up on that. I've also would like to see our, a couple of budget, I don't know, Committee of the Whole or something where the public can come in, the commissioners, and we can talk freely. Maybe request if we have issues with some department heads to be part in the discussion. And I would like this done within the next, you know, six to eight weeks, because I know last year, I didn't think I had enough time to oversee everything, even if the Finance Committee looked at it. We're all responsible for knowing what's in that budget and why it's changing, and where we stand fiscally. Solve it. And I think we vote on that the last week of September or something?
Last meeting in September.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Unless we changed our last meeting.
Okay, well, I'm just bringing it up, what I would like to see happen, and I hope the other commissioners would make a comment one way or the other if they'd like to see the same thing happen.
There'll be a, a public hearing, too.
Yes. Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I, I think we need to hone in on getting that involvement and us being able to just question things, if there is something to question, so. Other than that, get out and vote. I think we still got, what, a couple hours?
Hour.
An hour.
Well, I better get going. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
Okay, so thank you for everyone coming to, for coming tonight. This past week, I was able to participate in the Bay Sages, in their presentation on the four who flew, the Kalasak family, their history in Escanaba and Gladstone, and helping form the Delta County Airport, and they were some strong, fierce women, three strong women who were stunt flyers back in the 1920s, and that was an excellent presentation by Kylie Kalasak. I attended Solid Waste. Everything seems to be going as planned for that. And tomorrow is the 100th anniversary of the Escanaba Farmers Market, and they're going to be having a celebration down at the Escanaba Marketplace. Their farmers market runs from 3:00 until 6:00, but their celebration is going to start at 5:00, and they're going to have a proclamation from the mayor of Escanaba, and there'll be free cake. So I hope everybody can make it. And I, I would like to echo Commissioner View's comments. I would like to see a Committee of the Whole scheduled. I had actually emailed our administrator earlier today requesting a Committee of the Whole before the first public hearing is scheduled for the budget, so that all five commissioners can set eye on the budget before the public hearing. I was looking to have that done in the last week of August. So if we could try and, and get a Committee of the Whole together for the last week of August, I would greatly appreciate that, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Johnson.
One of the things coming up, it's one of our last big festivals of the year, is the fair's getting ready to start. And I've been actually really hesitant about putting some stuff out for the fair this year because there was a lot of things, well, frankly, in flux, and it has to do with the avian flu virus that was affecting livestock, particularly dairy cattle. the avian flu virus that was affecting livestock, particularly dairy cattle. And so it went back and forth between the state, and I will tell you, Senator McBroom was phenomenal in working with them on a weekly basis. And the state actually took it seriously. Now, they actually developed a whole separate group of criteria for the exhibitors, so that they know their animals that they're bringing to the fair are safe, as well as if, for someone, for seen reasons, and it's happened before, where an animal actually gets sick. And whether that's from, in this case, the avian flu, or swine flu, or, you know, another ailment, there's actually a really in-depth procedure now in place for them to be able to isolate that animal. The exhibitor can still stay with their animal. The superintendents are still able to stay in contact with that exhibitor, make sure everything that they need to take care of their animal, even though it's not in that barn now, it's actually on a different location on the fairgrounds, so that animal is isolated. That individual or individuals have everything they need to take care of their animal while they're still here at the fair, or whether or not they're going to get ready to return home with that animal that might be sick. There's a large amount of information that's given to them now on what they need to look at and what they need to prepare for bringing that animal that could be sick home. So I was really hesitant on bringing that forward, because that had really changed, and that finally was cemented within the last two weeks, is what that policy was. So look forward to, for everybody to turn out at the fair. Looks like so far, we're going to have awesome weather for it. It's a big boost, obviously, to our local economy. The amount of people that come in for our fair is not just Delta County, and it's not just people from across UP. There's many exhibitors that come from the northern parts of Wisconsin, even lower Michigan. So this is one of those that's, you know, a very large impact on our local community. The budget part, as we move forward, there is still some work. I know everybody wants to be a part of that. We're not quite there yet. And I know like others that have sat in and have seen that. Can tell you right now, we're working, we see what everybody's needs and wants are in that budget. And when we talked about being fiscally responsible, well, I can tell you, we're going to come up with over $370,000 worth of cuts right now. That's not positions, that's what's in the beginning part of the budget. That's where the process starts. Will we get there? Yeah, we're going to get there. Is it one that happens overnight? No. And that's why, as you've seen already, how many finance meetings that we've had. And it took, what, two? Two separate meetings just to get through the review process, to have that intimate working knowledge to do that. So I can tell you, I don't believe in living out of the fund balance. That's not an option. So if it means being tight in places, then we're going to be tight in places. Will everybody get everything, you know, that they want going into next year? You know, that's yet to be seen. I'd like to say, I'd like to fill every position everybody wants, but in this day and age, that's not always going to happen. So we will do the best we can on that, but we will, as it comes up here, we will have a balanced budget. And it's not just a balanced budget for this year, but setting us up for success going into next year's budget. So just because we can get to a balanced budget this year, if it's at the cost of next year, we're not doing ourselves any favors. We're not setting ourselves up for success. So that also means, you know, what we're doing is enable to go back to the fund balance, because what goes back to the fund balance this year, as contract negotiations come up, we have a group of those coming up. Was it three of them?
We have three.
Three of them this month. And those three contract negotiations will definitely affect what the bottom line of our budget is going into next year. So it's ideal to be able to put some back into our fund balance as we go forward, just because next year, you're going to have similar situation, whether it's contract negotiations, cost of increases. For those that don't know, I mean, everybody here, I'm pretty sure knows how much medical costs have increased. How many people in the room right now are aware that the individuals that are in the jail, the county has to pay for 100% of their medical? I can tell you, that number has gotten very big. So bear with us, we're working through that. When we get ready to have the public hearing and the committee of whole, you should have a good-looking budget. And I know our administrator has probably pulled her hair out, working with us with coming back with questions and places, you know, can we trim a little here, trim a little there? But that is actually happening. So again, thank you, everyone.
Administrator Young.
Thank you.
Like Commissioner Johnson was saying, we are working very, very hard at this budget, trying to get it balanced. So that's all I have. Meeting schedule, finance meeting, 8:00, at 8:30 in room 222. Personnel meeting, 8:12 at 11 o'clock AM in room 222. And the last would be the regular board commissioners meeting on 8:20 at 5:15 in the service center. Notices, 30-day notice appointments.
They should do the 30-day notice for.
Veterans?
Veteran advisory.
Is that done now? Should be received, application?
No, we did the notice two meetings ago, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
Or one meeting ago.
Uh-huh. Oh, one meeting ago, yeah.
Is that when it was?
Yeah.
During that line.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So supported.
All in favor? Thank you.